The Supplemental Public School Response Fund and Martha La Perle Fund being held on Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. The opening of the hearing has begun and I'm going to turn, instead of doing introductions now, we'll do it when we move to our full board meeting. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Molly O'Keefe and Dr. Ryan.
Great, thank you. I'll start off and Molly wants to provide some supplemental information. We'll absolutely ask her to do that. According to New Hampshire RSA 198 20B3 pursuant to that law, gifts in the amount of $5,000 or more shall require the board to hold a public hearing regarding any action to be taken with the gift. For gifts of less than 5,000, the board will post notice of the gift in the agenda of the next regularly scheduled board meeting and will include notice in the minutes of the meeting in which that gift is discussed. The acceptance of all gifts will be made in a public session, so we'll note board on these in the next meeting.
Thank you. David, may I ask a favor of you? Excuse me for interrupting. Could you open the chat box, please? Because we may have some folks who may want to type in some questions when we get to public input and I want to leave them enough time to type. Thank you.
Yep, I've opened up the chat box for folks who want to add their questions.
Thank you.
You got it.
All right.
Tonight, we have two unanticipated revenue funds with two gifts, I should say, that we checked with legal counsel and they recommended particularly on one that we bring up before the board. Both are over the amount limited by the RSA. The first, we call it COVID money. It's the Supplemental Public School Response Fund. If you recall, the governor issued an order to use additional Gopher Committee money that was parsed out by $200 per student in every public school district in the state of New Hampshire. And we were awarded back, I believe it was on November 9th was the first disbursement date. The Cooperative School Board, Molly, why did you print this so small? The Cooperative School Board total amount that was requested was $732,701.91 and the total awarded was $675,227.83. In round one, there were two rounds, in round one, it was the $200 per student. And so that award was $555,800. Second round was an additional $10 million that we were able to request additional, for additional reimbursements. Most school districts across the state did that, surprisingly not all did. They had so many requests, they were only able to award about 80% of the ask. So we actually got about 68% of the ask. We had asked for $176,901.91 and they awarded us $119,427. So that total of 675,227.83 is the amount of unanticipated revenue that we've received through the Supplemental Public School Response Fund. Molly, can you just talk briefly about what the use of those funds will be?
Sure. So everything that we could apply for had to be here and in use by December 30th. So we went back, we could go all the way back until March of last year. So everything and anything related to COVID, we put on the list. We put on everything from ionization machines to the electrostatic cleaners, even things like traffic cones to direct the new traffic patterns in COVID. We put everything, we scrubbed the financials to the best of our ability, worked with all the schools and put anything related to COVID that we could think of on the list.
Excellent. Thank you. Our second fund this evening that we would be looking for approval from our board is a check for $15,000 from an anonymous donor. The funds are a donation to the Martha La Pearl Outreach Program to purchase grocery store gift cards for in-district families in need. And the gift cards are in lieu of holiday baskets this year that we're not able to assemble and deliver due to COVID-19 protocols. So those are our two funds that we would be asking the board to receive this evening. And at this point, we would typically, as a public hearing, open it up for public comment.
Thank you, David and Molly. I'll ask first if there are any board members who have any questions and then I'll see if anyone has any from the public in terms of our chat box. Any questions from the board? This is indeed wonderful news, of course, and we appreciate your sharing that information with us this evening and for coordinating all of that, Molly and Michelle. That's a lot of work to do. We appreciate it immensely. Since there are no questions from the board, I will see if there's any from the public just on these particular items. I see one question in the chat box from Kim Leo. Thank you to the anonymous donor for our local families. Absolutely. We echo that. Thank you, Kim, for saying that. Are there any other comments relative to this hearing from the public? All right then, seeing none, I would assume then at this point in time, the board can deliberate on this, but you had indicated, Molly, would be better to do that in the full board meeting. Am I correct on that?
I would recommend that we take that up during the finance report.
During finance report, right. Okay, thank you. So in that case then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this hearing. Bob, thank you. Do I have a second on that? Travis, thank you very much. All in favor, please raise your hands for adjourning this hearing. Opposed? Abstentions? All right then, the hearing is closed and we'll take this up further in our full board meeting. So now we will open our full Cooperative School Board meeting this evening with introductions. I am Helen Joyce. I'm Chair of the Co-op Board. Travis?
Good evening, everybody. Travis Thompson from Stratum, Vice Chair of the Co-op.
Thank you. Maggie?
Hi, Maggie Bishop from Exeter.
Paul?
Paul Bauer from Newfields.
Kim?
Hi, Kim Meyer, Exeter.
Dave?
Hi, Dave Sluka, Exeter.
Bob?
Good evening, Bob, Paul, Kensington.
Melissa?
Hi, Melissa Litchfield from Brettwood.
And Kathy? You're muted, Kathy.
Kathy McNeil from East Kingston. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Our SAU administrators, Dr. Ryan?
Hi, everyone. David Ryan, Superintendent of Schools.
Molly?
Molly O'Keefe, the Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you. Helen?
Helen Wiss, Director of Student Services. Good evening.
Rusty?
Good evening. Rusty Lister, Director of Facilities.
And Michelle?
Good evening, Michelle Austin, Assistant Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, our building administrators, Mike?
Mike Monahan, Principal of Exeter High School.
Patty?
Good evening. Patty Wans, Principal of Cooperative Middle School.
Sharon?
Sharon Wilson, Principal of Seaco School of Technology.
Thank you very much. I don't believe I've left anyone out as far as our administration and board members. Am I correct on that? I got it right this time. All right, that's great. Thank you. All righty. With regard to public input this evening, we did receive a number of letters from the community with regard to the budget and school opening, et cetera. We're going to be addressing these issues this evening during our board meeting. I will let the public know that, first of all, I want to apologize because at our meeting the other day when we had our budget workshop, I neglected to leave enough time for folks to type in questions. I wasn't thinking about people typing and some folks did not get an opportunity to send those messages to us. So this evening, what I'm going to do after our chair's report, after my chair's report, I'm going to ask Dr. Ryan to open the chat box. Then I'll remind you so that folks can have enough time, maybe the last 15 minutes or so, if they want to type in any comments with regard to anything this evening. If that works for you, David, will that work?
Yep, that'll work just fine. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We do have some honored guests here this evening. We'll begin with our athletic state champions. And I'm going to introduce our athletic director, Coach Ball, to do the introductions for us.
Thank you, Helen. Nice to be here tonight and celebrate two fall champions. First, like Bob Bailey, our longtime golf coach, won the Division One State Championship up at Bretton Woods, way up north, this past fall. Great, great season for him. Terrific group of kids. Handle themselves well in victory. Very proud of that group and first one since 1989. So Coach Bailey, say a few words, please.
I think Mr. Bailey, you're muted.
Oh, you're probably right.
There you go, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to just thank Coach Ball and Kevin McQueen, my assistant. The kids were great. Starting on September 8th, we were the first to go back and the kids responded, you know, with forays. They followed all our rules. They did what they needed to do. They played great golf. And I was so proud of them at the end.
Thank you so much and thank you for your dedication to our students. Congratulations to you and your team, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Yes, right of applause, absolutely. All right, great.
And next, certainly not a stranger to you people or anyone else, unprecedented ninth state title, two years undefeated. Just does an amazing job running our girls soccer program. Does a great job for Patty down in the middle school and she's just, she's a gem. Megan Young.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me and thank you for recognizing our team. I would like to start off by just saying to Coach Ball, to the entire board, to Dr. Ryan, we can't thank you enough for giving us the opportunity to play this year. So thank you so much for all your continued support. I saw firsthand how appreciative those athletes were to be out there. And I know from my team, we had 13 seniors and they took full advantage of being able to be out there and had themselves a great season. So thank you to all of you for giving them that opportunity. I'm so happy for them and so proud of them and it was a great way to end their senior seasons especially.
We want to thank you, Megan, for your dedication as well. You have an awesome group of girls. They're losing all of those seniors. I have no doubt those coming behind will do equally well. And I was going to echo what you just said, that I can't say enough about how happy we as a board and our administrators all are that we were able to provide that for our student body and for our athletes. And it bodes well for our winter program, which I know is underway at this point in time. And thank you again and please extend our congratulations to the girls. I see some of them are already signing with some big schools, which is great. I see it in the newspaper. That's wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
Terrific. Any other board comments or questions for either Mr. Bailey or Ms. Young? How about a round of applause for all of them?
Thank you, the both.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay and continue this evening with us. But if you want to sign off, by all means, feel free to do so. So thank you again and thank you, Bill, for all of your hard work. I know that hasn't been easy for you either.
Thanks very much, everyone. Thank you.
All righty.
Thanks, Coach.
Have a good evening. Thank you and happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
You also.
The next item that we're going to be talking about tonight, I'm not sure if the entire board is tuned in to what is happening. We do have another guest with us tonight. You will see that Kate Miller has joined us. She is the moderator for our school district. Welcome, Kate. Several weeks back, I took part in a webinar that the New Hampshire School Board Association invited board members to attend with regard to deliberative sessions. As you well know, it's going to be a challenge this year with regard to how we are going to conduct our deliberative session. I came away, I'm going to be honest with you, my head was spinning when I heard of some of the ramifications of all of this. And in the interim, Travis, Kate and Dave and I have met a couple of times to talk about this. We do not have to make any decisions tonight, nor will we, but we want you to hear what our options are, what the ramifications of those are, and open it up for questions and perhaps clearly suggestions from the board as well. So Kate, if you have no objection, I will turn it over to you at this point in time and then we'll open it up for questions. I think you're muted, Kate. There you go.
Is that better?
It is. Thank you.
Right, good, thank you. Well, this board has faced an incredible number of challenges over the last year and they just keep coming. So our coming up in the new year is the process for doing the deliberative session for the school district, which is a time for the voters to come together in a meeting with the board and talk about and debate the articles that are proposed for the warrant. It's then voted on in March at the balloting day. Because of the risks of people gathering during this time of pandemic, the legislature early last spring proposed and passed some, a new law that would allow for a virtual process. Like so many things this year dealing with the pandemic, it's not a great alternative, but it is an alternative. And I'm happy to chat a little bit about it and just give folks some information. Unlike most deliberative sessions and balloting sessions where the moderator is sort of in charge of making the decisions and making sure that the process is run smoothly, this is actually a decision for this board to make. It doesn't need to vote on it tonight, but ultimately the decision on how to proceed, whether with a traditional deliberative session in person or with this new virtual alternative is going to be with the board. Lucky you. So it's going to be tough. So the traditional version of deliberative session, probably all of you have been to them before. We generally gather in the auditorium at the high school. There are often, depending on how many warrant articles of interest to people, it could be dozens of people there in the audience, as well as at least a dozen up on the stage who are the school board and administrators. And in addition, there may be, you know, 50, 100 more folks in the audience. So it's a good-sized group and it often lasts for, you know, several hours. The alternative that's offered by the legislature, should the board decide to do it, is to have a different process. It's not really a deliberative session because the voters don't have the same opportunity to debate and discuss with the board or to offer any amendments or changes to the warrant articles, including things like the budget. So what is set up is a process that involves two meetings. The first one is the time when the board discusses, explains, provides information on the articles on the ballot. So that would be the budget and I understand there may be a collective bargaining agreement this year. So that would be a time for the usual pretty in-depth presentation by the business manager through the budget, questions about the budget and the collective bargaining agreement. There's an opportunity during the traditional deliberative session for folks to make changes to the extent they are permitted by law. So there are some limitations, but there are opportunities for folks to make amendments to some of those articles. The alternative process would be an information session where you'd do a lot of that presentation, but the public would not be participating. So they have an opportunity to listen and watch, but not ask questions. And then the board solicits information from the public in electronic format. So by email, I think it can also be done by voicemail. So the questions and comments of the public come in and within seven days of that informational meeting, the board holds a second meeting when it reviews the comments and the questions, goes over them, addresses them. And then the board has the opportunity there to make any changes to the articles that are on the warrant. So to the extent they can be amended, the board could then do that at that second meeting. So they're called meetings because they're really meetings of the board as opposed to the traditional deliberative session. So that's the alternative, but it doesn't end there because when you go to the balloting day, there's also an alternative process. The folks who are elected, all the school board members and the officers, like the clerk and the treasurer, those will be on the traditional ballot that's called the official ballot in this version. There'll be then an alternative ballot that will have the articles that have been approved by the board and placed on the ballot. The first question before any of the articles that the board has developed is whether or not the voters approve this alternative process. So if a majority of the voters in our six towns say yes, we're on board with this alternative process, then folks can vote on the other items on the ballot, the collective bargaining agreement, the budget. And if those pass, they pass and if they don't pass, they don't pass. If that first question does not pass, then none of the others can pass, even if a majority of voters vote for them. So there is a big opportunity for the voters to participate at the ballot box, both in terms of voting on the articles and then voting on the process. But it removes that deliberative participation. The board can, if the budget doesn't pass because it was not approved or because the voters did not approve of the virtual process, the board can in a meeting deem the previous year's budget to be the budget for the next year. So you have the option, rather than being stranded, to do that. You can also convene a meeting, and I believe this is a meeting of the board, not a district meeting, when you would adopt the budget. So there are a couple of other options to do that, but it's kind of uncharted territory. One thing that we've talked about a bit in this sort of small group with Helen and Travis and the superintendent and Molly is maybe alternative locations or broadening the space in some way. So we've always met in the auditorium. There may be options for spreading people out into other rooms so there aren't so many people in one room. There may be an option even in February, we are New Hampshire people, we are hardy, to do it outside. So that's one possibility. It would be, you know, plenty of room to spread out. You wouldn't have the same hazards of being in an enclosed space. So there are lots of different ways of trying to solve this challenge. And I think the board should definitely take some time to consider, you know, the pros and cons and there may be other alternatives beyond the ones that we've talked about in terms of how to do this safely. What we can't do is a meeting like this and have it count as a deliberative session. That's not unfortunately considered part of the law. So we've got the new laws, virtual meetings, traditional deliberative session, maybe in an untraditional location.
Thank you, Kate. One other point too with regard to all of this, that if we were to go with a non-traditional deliberative session, as Kate just described, every voter has to be notified in all six towns. We have to coordinate that through the supervisors of the checklist and send letters to everyone within a certain period. There's a narrow window of time that that can be done. There are a lot of, you know, for me personally, I have a lot of concerns about going with something different from our traditional deliberative session. Most importantly, number one, is the fact that our constituents would not be able to have any input at the first session and they would not be the ones amending the articles. It would be the board amending articles based on input that we would receive between the first and the second meeting. So that does concern me, yet at the same time, I know there's a concern with regard to COVID, having something indoors. I had suggested the possibility when we met earlier this week of holding the meeting with everyone spread out in the auditorium, opening classrooms. And if it's being aired on Channel 13 Live, which it normally would be, of having TV set up in a number of classrooms and having people spread out to watch. If they wanted to speak, they could come to the auditorium to speak and then return to the classrooms. There, I guess, there's no perfect answer to this, but I'm going to open it up now for comments or questions and we will probably tackle this in terms of a vote at our hearing in January. Maggie?
Kate, I just have a curiosity question. If we choose to do it the traditional way, do each board member, does every board member have to be onsite? Or could they come in virtually and have some onsite?
I think you all have to be onsite and I would say you all would need to be on camera in Helen's variation where she's suggesting there may be folks in different classrooms that are watching and can go in and out of the auditorium in order to speak. The board could spread out. We don't have to all be on the stage. The folks are usually there. But they would need to be present in order for that to be a deliberative session.
That was my question. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thanks, Maggie. Paul?
Thank you, Helen. Obviously, we all need to process this more before making a final decision, but I am quite concerned with the idea of having it indoors, having everyone gather indoors somewhere. And that's mainly because, you know, I want our students, I want our schools open for in-person education and I want them to stay open. And it concerns me that if we have all the parents gathering indoors somewhere, that could potentially jeopardize that. For the same reason, I'm concerned about the idea of having people spread throughout the high school. I'm sure that would make things very difficult for Mr. Lister and the facilities department in cleaning the building. And again, not wanting to introduce the possibility of bringing that into our school building. At the same time, I'm really not satisfied at all with the alternative process. I mean, it doesn't give the voters anywhere near the same opportunity to be engaged in the deliberative session process like they normally are. So that's really not acceptable either. So, you know, my initial reaction is I'd like to explore more the possibility of doing something outdoors, you know, maybe using the stadium. It might not be the most comfortable thing to do, but it would be safer and it would also allow everybody to participate the way that they're used to participating, which I don't want to deprive the voters of. So those are my initial thoughts, but we certainly all need to process it more.
Thank you, Paul. I think Travis had the same thought when we met earlier this week, didn't you, Travis, about the stadium?
Yeah, that's exactly what I thought and Paul, for the same concerns that you've already outlined. This is where Mike is going to cringe, but you know, it's like graduation over again. You know, we've got the space in the stadium. We can set up, you know, screens so that people can see what they need to see. There will be the opportunity for any member of the public to speak to any of the warrants that are there. So it will behave just like our regular deliberative session. It'll just be a little bit colder and maybe a little bit quicker in that case. But I think that's potentially the idea that keeps us on the safest path to having a deliberative session that lets the voters have their say in the process.
Thanks, Travis. Any other comments or questions from the board? I think there were, David, did you want to add anything? Dr. Ryan?
I agreed with having an outdoor event when we discussed this earlier. My recommendation would be to change the date, however, to a day event, perhaps on Saturday to gain some heat from sunlight. I think Friday or Thursday evening at 7:00 in February is mighty cold.
I agree.
We need to get some of that by having some sunlight. So that would be my only recommendation, if we were to pursue that.
Good point. We will also be keeping in touch with Kate throughout this process, but I would think, I bring Molly in here, and then Kathy has a question. Molly, I would I would think that we would have to make a decision on this no later than our January fifth hearing, correct?
I believe so. I'll have to check this to the posting of the deliberative, but I don't know how far in advance it has to be posted.
Right.
Looking it up.
And that would be our last meeting, full board meeting before the currently scheduled deliberative. So I I would think that by then we're going to need to come to a decision. But I I don't want to speak for the whole board on that. Thank you, Molly. Kathy, you had a question?
I do. I agree with the outdoor idea. The only thing I'm concerned about is we would need to have a backup for inclement weather, and if we have a couple of issues, we have one backup and we have another day with snow or rain, or it's going to have to be rescheduled again, and is that going to be a problem to get the by the date we need it, Kate?
Yeah, so we have a a limited, oh, may I speak, Helen?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. Sure. Go right ahead.
There is a limited window, though. We've got, I think it's an eight-day period within which our deliberative session has to be held. The right now, it's scheduled for the Thursday of that week, and I think we have reserved in the world where we thought we would be indoors, the auditorium for the next day as as an alternative in case we had inclement weather and people couldn't get there. But as Dr. Ryan suggested, we may be able to go with an an earlier date and have the the meeting scheduled for, you know, the the Saturday before, which would give us an entire week to be able to be more flexible and try to find a a better time if we needed to. It February is a lousy time to try to have a meeting indoors or outside.
It is. Agreed. Okay.
Thanks, Kathy. Yes, Dr. Ryan, and then Melissa?
I just had two points of information. The first is we have until January twenty-fifth to post warrants and bonds prior to deliberative, so we still would have twenty days after the the hearing to to be able to post. The dates for deliberative, deliberative needs to happen between Saturday, the thirtieth, and Saturday, the sixth of February. So there are two Saturdays in there, so there's some flexibility, perhaps. As Kate referenced, that scheduling for that first Saturday and having snow in Magdalen, we would come back the following Saturday, perhaps with a snow day if we're pursuing the outdoor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that information. Melissa?
Thank you, Helen. Thank you, David, for looking that up right away, too. That's great. I would I would like to echo what everyone else is saying, that I definitely think that an in-person deliberative session would be most effective. But I do have to say, having just spent an an event outdoors for four to five hours myself on December second, it's not as easy as it sounds when you're sitting in a chair, and I had the hand warmers, foot warmers, and the earmuffs. It's it's pretty cold out there. I do want to throw out there that we're going to revisit this again in January anyway, but maybe we could consider on the auditorium socially distance, maybe, you know, two or three seats in between every person, and we can all wear face masks or something along those lines. That that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mike, do you have it? Mike Monahan, do you have any thoughts on this? As principal of the high school, I think we should ask you your do you have a preference on this?
No, I'll, you know, I'll I'll work to try to make anything work that you guys want to want to do, whether it's outside or in the building. I don't know, maybe the gymnasium as well. I don't know.
All right then. Thank you. I didn't want to leave you out since it's the high school involved here, so clearly we want to get your input. So you may want to think about it as well and connect with Dr. Ryan over the next few weeks. All right then. Well, Kate, thank you so much. We will be in touch with you as well and wish you a happy holiday and you and your family and be well and be safe.
Thanks. Same to all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kate.
Alrighty, our next item, our approval of our minutes, a public minutes from November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Are there any corrections or omissions? I I just had one on the top of page three. It indicated, I think Patty was reporting out on the CMS World Language Teacher for twenty twenty-one World Language Teacher of the Year, but her name was not included. And I think it would be nice for the purpose of our minutes to at least mention the name of that that person. So Patty, would you give give us, it was it was a woman, wasn't it?
Yes, it's Marjorie Pym.
Marjorie Pym.
Actually, because I had just learned of it that day, I actually put it in my report, but
Oh, good. All right. We just wanted, we just wanted for purposes of the minutes as well. Thank you so much. Paul, did you have anything you wanted to change or add?
I did. On page four, in the paragraph right above where committee reports begins.
Right.
In the the second to last sentence that begins Mr. Bauer, says, Mr. Bauer said next year, he would like to find a creative way to educate all students in person five days a week. To give context, at the end of that sentence, it should say, should COVID continue to present challenges? I felt that 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 sentence needed some context as as to why I was saying what I was saying. And then one other, under the facilities committee, the last sentence, it says, he's hoping the students can get into the cafeteria next year. They'll certainly get into the cafeteria next year. They should say he's hoping the students get into the cafeteria at the beginning of next academic year.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. I had one additional, it's just a minor item. At the top of page four, it starts with Ms. O'Keefe, and we're talking about Molly reporting, but there was no delineation between her and Patty, who was the speaker before. So if they could just add financial report, the the phrase financial report in front of Molly's name, just to indicate we're talking about now a different part of the meeting, that would be helpful. Are there any other corrections or omissions? Yes, Travis?
A a question maybe for for Molly or Melissa, since it's referencing your statement, Melissa, but still on page four in the finance committee, it reads, Ms. Litchfield said the unreserved fund balance is one point two million. Isn't it in the neighborhood of four million or something at that point, four point two?
Yeah, it's, it would have been four point two for the current year unless she was talking about the prior year.
That's why I wanted to reference Melissa, too, to see. I thought that's what you were talking about, Melissa, being the current year, but I wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Travis. No, it's okay. I'm trying to look at it now. I did, I read it before, but I still want to look at it again.
Typically, in the finance, we're talking about the current year's budget from the committee standpoint.
I would change it to four point two.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis. Thank you, Melissa. Any other changes? Dr. Ryan?
These minutes should reflect that public session adjourned at ten twenty-nine PM.
Thank you.
It was, Ms. Ms. McNeil made the motion to adjourn the public meeting, seconded by Mr. Thompson. The motion carried with unanimous roll call vote of eight to zero, and it adjourned at ten twenty-nine PM.
Thank you very much.
To the final minutes.
Thank you so much. Any others? All right then, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November seventeenth, twenty twenty as amended.
I moved.
Okay, Kim, thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Travis. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please raise your hands. Okay, Paul, Travis, Kim, Melissa, Bob, Kathy, and Dave. Thank you. Opposed? And abstentions? Maggie, thank you very much. One abstention. I'm an I as well on that, so thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. One more set of minutes is the special meeting minutes from November seventeenth of twenty twenty. Are there any corrections or omissions to that particular set of minutes? All right, seeing that I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written?
So moved, Helen, Kim.
Kim, thank you. Second on that?
I'll second again.
Thanks, Travis. All in favor, please raise your hands. Paul, Melissa, Kim, Travis, myself, Kathy, Bob, and Dave. Opposed? Abstentions? Maggie's sustaining. Thank you, Maggie. All right, great. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to our administrators' report, we will hear first from Dr. Ryan. We have three items under Dr. Ryan's.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Good to see everyone. Terms of dates for filing for school board positions, there are three seats from our cooperative school board that are up for reelection. Maggie Bishop from Exeter, Helen Joyce from Stratum, and Paul Bauer from Newfields. The school district moderator, you met her earlier this evening, Kate Miller, her position is also up for reelection. On the budget advisory committee, there are three seats up for election, Dave Pendell from East Kingston. Dave's been the chair for several years. Dave has indicated he will not be running again for a role on the budget advisory committee, and he will be missed. Deb Bronson from Stratum and Levi Olaf from Exeter. The filing dates, they vary between the towns within a day or of each other. The range in dates to file start on January twentieth or twenty-first and will conclude on either January twenty-nine or thirty, depending upon the town in which you live. So usually that's a a nine-day filing period. We strongly encourage to file early and often. Kayla has not heard back from all of the towns just yet. She's assembling that list. We'll send that master list out not only to this board, but to the entire joint board once we have all of that assembled, so that people are very well aware. We'll also post that on our website for anybody in the community who wishes to run for a position on school board or our budget advisory committee in any of our our towns. In terms of the vaccination program, Chief Kane provided an update for us just the other day. I asked him to bring us up to probably right before vacation. He has that information. This Friday, December eighteenth, the National Guard will be doing some walkthrough training in the sophomore lot at the high school. They may conduct some drive-through dry runs as well. So we may see some vehicles coming and going as they practice their drive-through event. They're anticipating a soft opening on Wednesday, December twenty-third. Vaccinations of those actually doing the vaccinating, so the volunteers who are going to be administering the shots are going to be vaccinated themselves first. Makes total sense. Tuesday, December twenty-nine, they're anticipating that to be the official opening of the site. And those will be for invited patients only. The two guard members that will be in charge of the site, Captain Miller and Sergeant Bover, they've been given a key to the gate that leads to the concession stand in the parking lot side and the concession stand itself. They've exchanged contact information with Rusty and with Rich Kane, so they are in touch with each other. We might see them delivering equipment to the area over the next few weeks. They'll be keeping Rich informed of whenever they come to campus. They'll be supplying traffic people to screen and move the patients to the correct line once the vaccinations start. So people will be very well directed on where to go so that they remain in the area where they belong. At some point, we will have to ask those who are parking in the sophomore lot if school be, when school begins, to park in a different spot. I know Mr. Monahan will work with Rusty and Rich on how we're going to be adjusting that. They'll be routing vaccination traffic through the faculty lot to alleviate any issues for parent pickup, cafeteria, or school deliveries. We may have to ask those faculty members who are parking in that faculty lot to park out front, starting in January. But there may be a workaround, so they continue to look at the logistics of that to try not to disrupt the normal school day for where we're parking or how we're entering the building. The National Guard will supply people to do that traffic as well. And the numbers expected haven't changed for phase one of the vaccinations. They're looking to be about twenty-five people an hour. If that becomes too many, they have the ability to have Department of Health and Human Services lower that number. And this will be a drive-through vaccination. No people will be leaving their vehicle, entering the building, or walking around the school campus at all. It's anticipated that this round, this phase, which there's a four-phase process, will last probably with first responders, long-term care facilities, medical practitioners through the month of February, at which point it'll then shift to level one of phase two, which is our education staff, so teachers, paraprofessionals, folks who work within the schools. And that will, again, it's a two-dose process, so that will last approximately six to eight weeks. So by the last week of April, most of our educators will have been vaccinated. For those who choose to be vaccinated, will receive their second dose and their boost. So they can prepare to have April vacation and be a little bit more ironclad, having been vaccinated. Is any questions on the vaccination site before I move on? Great, okay. Staff capacity update. Presently at CMS, we have twenty-six staff members who are unable to provide in-person services. Eight absences of COVID-related. One staff member is ill with COVID. And there are fifteen teachers who have medical or FMLA accommodations to teach remotely. They're scheduled to open on Thursday to return to in-person learning, and that will continue through December twenty-third. We are opening on Thursday for in-person learning. There will be several classrooms in which a paraprofessional or other staff member is supervising students whose teacher is remoting in. I will be one of those people in a classroom on Friday, and I've asked Patty to assign me to help alleviate some of those needs because we do have vacancies that need to be filled. And we're going to do what we can to ensure that we have our kids coming to school between now and the Christmas break. We did meet today. We had a good conversation on how we're going to move forward, trying to fill those gaps. I know she was going to reach out to to Mr. Monahan at the high school for any additional staff members who might be able to assist, and so we're hopeful that we can continue to rely on the people that we have available to provide some of that coverage. The high school currently has five teachers who are unable to provide in-person instruction. We see no delay in beginning in-person learning at the start of the second semester, which is January nineteenth. There may be this, the or the list I'm working from is about a week old. So I know we've had a couple of ADA accommodation meetings since that time, so we just don't have the results of those in just yet. And some of the programs at SST have had a series of transitions between in-person and remote instruction, but for the most part have stood strong through the semester. They've had ten positive cases, the majority of which have been most recently in November and the early part of December. But presently, there is only one program on remote. So at this time, I have a recommendation to our board that we'll need to discuss. It's a recommendation I made earlier to our Exeter School Board. It was supported. Beginning with SST, I'd like to recommend that SST returns to school on January fourth in a remote capacity and remain there for ten days to coincide with the recommended number of days to quarantine before resuming in-person learning on January fourteenth. Based on feedback from families and staff from SST, that's what's being requested, and that's what I'm recommending. I think it's the most prudent decision that we can make. We may want to consider for all of our schools, given that most school districts around us, colleges and universities have already taken that step, really to mitigate any transmission that happens in school over a ten-day vacation period, where we know people are going to be traveling and congregating and not always living up to the CDC guidelines that that are recommended. I think that with moving Main Street School last Thursday to full remote, right into the Christmas vacation based on a cluster outbreak, and the number of cases that we've had, we can see how quickly COVID can spread within our schools. And it causes a disruption that I know families, at least a voice displeasure to me, with having to go back and forth between remote and in-person. And we know that within our memorandum of agreement, there exists a day of transition for teachers to prep appropriately. And so when we move on to a remote platform, teachers are to have a day of prep while students work independently. And then if we have another disruption- And then if we have another disruption, they get a day of transition, and that becomes very disruptive, and I know our families are very frustrated with that, as are we and as are our teachers. Our teachers want to be in the buildings working with students on a daily basis moving forward into the spring. The number of disruptions has been highly problematic for us. I also believe that CMS should return to school on January fourteenth, even with the time that they've lost. I mean, I'm very well aware that this will not have the support of many of our families who have expressed their displeasure with my leadership ability and trying to navigate through COVID-nineteen with our schools. I know that this will not meet the expectations of some of our families who really believe that our students should be in school every day, starting now, pushing some of the guidelines aside. But I believe that since March, we've committed to providing the highest level of safety and health guidelines first. Trying to focus on providing the very best education that we can. We've made our mistakes along the way, but we're doing our best to keep everyone safe first. We understand that students want to be in school. I want students to be in school. I want my own son to be in school. He's not been in school since March. So I totally am empathetic with our parents who want their children in school, and that's exactly what it is we're trying to do. We believe that by extending that ten-day quarantine period, and we're going to be asking all of our school boards to accept this recommendation. By extending that ten days for remote instruction for all of our schools in beginning of January fourteenth, we will cut down on the transmission risk tremendously and hopefully avoid the disruptions that would most likely take place as they did after the Thanksgiving break. So as I said prior to tonight, I did meet with the Exeter Elementary School Board. I did make the same recommendation. They were supportive of it. They accepted it knowing that many schools around us, including Phillips Exeter, the academy's not even bringing their students back until the middle to the end of February. And so I would offer that up to this board this evening, and that concludes my report.
So David, are you asking for a motion from this board to extend the remote at CMS and SST following the holiday break to January fourteenth? Are you asking us to vote on this this evening?
I'm actually, Madam Chair, not asking for a vote because it's not within the purview of the board for that. What I am asking for is feedback and input to help with the support of that decision. If I receive feedback and input that appears not to be as supportive, then I think we would have to continue with that conversation. But the board would typically not vote on this, as they would not vote on a snow day.
All right, thank you. Why don't we open it up at this point then for questions or comments? Melissa?
Hi, thank you Helen, first of all. I'd like to ask actually if we could have a dialogue together with the board, because I feel as though sometimes I might make comments, but I feel as though more I'm talking at everyone and not with everyone, and I'm wondering if we can please have a conversation just to work through this, especially to help me work through this. You know, as we're sitting here talking, you know, we talked about how we're utilizing the parking lot at EHS for vaccines, right? We're not utilizing it as a school, which it should be. And then we're not allowing room in Zoom, but yet we just talked about having remote teachers with remote teachers teaching the kids while they're in school, but they can't be there. And then we're talking about pulling EHS teachers, or excuse me, staff members to help with CMS. Like, I just don't understand it. I understand we want to be good community members and good neighbors. We're in a pandemic and I understand that that we want to help everyone, and David, I appreciate it that you want to open up the EHS parking lot. It's very noble. It really is. Just for me personally, I just want to see the kids back there, and I've always been on the impression, having been on the Safety and Security Committee since it began, that we don't want strangers. We don't necessarily want other people on the school property while our kids are there. We want to keep them safe, never mind during a pandemic. So I just, like, I just want to talk to everyone. I just wish, I wish we were together in person. I want to have a conversation. Why isn't CMS taking care of CMS and the kids there and EHS taking care of EHS and the kids there, and why isn't there a single other place in the state, you know, in Rockingham County that we can utilize for the vaccinations? Like, I'm just frustrated. So I'm asking if we could please just have a discussion about that. That's the first thing. And then the second thing, I do see what you're saying about going remote that first week back. If you are going to do something like that, my personal two cents worth would be sure if you want to consider the week because people travel for January first. I know a lot of people wouldn't agree with me on this. But I believe the new, the new amount is ten days, so I would say then, you know, have that five days remote and go back on January eleventh would be my recommendation, which is a Monday, not that Thursday. And I apologize for not giving any of you eye contact. I have notes and I've been looking at my notes to speak to you. And that's it. Thank you Helen.
Thank you Melissa. We certainly can have a conversation. I know it's tilted because of the nature of Zoom. But I have to say that at our last meeting, when we were, when we had our meeting last week, and Chief Kane came to speak with regard to the vaccinations, I did open it up for comments or discussion from the board, and I I don't recall other than a couple of questions that people had there being any opposition to this plan. So we did give everyone on the board an opportunity to be able to do that. If I'm wrong, please correct me on that, but I believe that's what happened last, last week. So and but we're hearing your concerns. I'm not, you know, putting that down. I just wanted to make it clear that we did have opportunity for discussion on that. Any other?
Helen, you're not wrong. You're not wrong at all. It's just, it's hard, and this isn't directed at you. This is just society in general today. You know, I don't, I didn't agree with the vaccinations being done, but number one, I felt like, what could I say? What could I do? What power do I have, number one? And number two, it's just almost frowned upon to say, what, you don't want to utilize this property for vaccinations? It's a community property, like, you know, how dare she, or she doesn't want to help people, or, you know, and that's not where I'm coming from. It's just to not feel comfortable having the vaccinations at EHS and speaking up on it. It's not a fun place to be, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I hope you'll feel that you can speak at any point in time in our meetings and voice your opinion. I don't believe there's anybody on this board who would ever attempt to squelch that, and so, you know, you know, I just, I guess what I'm saying is for future consideration, please speak up, you know, I know you have in the past certainly, but in that particular instance, it would have been good to have heard your, your concerns on that. So thank you for your input. Are there any other questions or comments with regard to Dr. Ryan's suggestion of returning our CMS and SST students to the just to full in-person on the four, or in-person, I should say, on the fourteenth? Paul?
Thank you Helen. You know, as I've said several times throughout this, I want to get our kids educated in-person back in school as soon as we possibly can. Equally important, though, is keeping them educated in-person in the schools. And I think that that is what Dr. Ryan's aiming to achieve here, is rather than have our students just go back on the fourth and maybe be there for two or three days and then have to go back remote because we were having illnesses, it practically probably gives us our best chance of having an extended in-person educational experience to give that extra time. So that's kind of how I'm understanding it and seeing that it makes sense. Even though it's not exactly the issue that we started talking about, because Melissa brought up the vaccine issue, I do want to address that a bit too, because, you know, we certainly can have a conversation about it. I mean, I guess, first of all, I'm not sure that I see doing the vaccinations on the high school campus as adversely impacting the ability to get back to in-person schooling. It sounds like we've got a plan where the in-person schooling can go forward regardless of whether the vaccinations are happening or not. In terms of the campus security, I mean, I hear you. That was why, you know, my, my main concern and the, I think the one question that I asked of Rich Kane was, we're not going to allow anybody, you know, the workers or certainly anybody who's coming to get the vaccinations to be within the school building, and we got an adamant no on that. And I guess the other thing is, you know, because National Guard's going to be there, my understanding from Chief Kane is that they're going to be providing some security. People aren't going to be leaving their cars. You know, I feel like it doesn't present a security risk really, but it is something that's important for us to think about and, you know, happy to have a conversation on that too.
Thank you Paul. I'd like to chime in on this as well, and I, I know that we had some major issues and concerns when CMS returned from the Thanksgiving break, which was on November thirtieth, and to echo some of what Paul has said, the kids were back only a few days, and then we had to close up again because of the fact that we had all of these COVID-related issues and not enough staff members to man in-person. So I don't want to see a repeat of that, certainly, and I, and I would be in favor of supporting Dr. Ryan's suggestion. Having said that, I have to say, and I'm, you know, the concerns that I have, and we've talked about this among ourselves, and we have received multiple emails from parents in the community who have been concerned about some of the issues with regard to the remote instruction that's going on, and there's a whole host of issues that I won't list all of them, but I want to make sure that if we do follow this plan, this recommended plan, and for safety reasons, I certainly do, do support it. We need to make certain that while those kids are home for those, that ten days, that they're getting quality instruction remote. I'm going to say this publicly. I I feel that, you know, this board has been receiving, as I said earlier, multiple messages from parents, and it's very frustrating as a board member when I'm hearing these things, because in all honesty, these are things that sometimes we're not aware of. We are being blamed for it. I'm not pointing blame anywhere. There are issues with regard to staff, staffing issues. There are tech issues going on. There are any number of things happening, and I, I just want to say that I hope that, you know, if we do follow this plan, that whatever plan is presented for our youngsters, that they're getting quality instruction at home until we get them back in the classroom. Yes, Dave?
Hi, just a couple of things. I know we referenced PEA. It's hard to compare with PEA because they were in-person, so. Also, I mean, I'm, again, we hear it all the time. The public's, it's constantly on every news channel about us, you know, monitoring ourselves and not traveling and stuff. Again, to push it back, I've been saying this forever. We keep on pushing back, pushing back. You know, when is this ever going to end? I mean, the kids are always wondering. The parents are always wondering. It is truly, you know, a pandemic. It is a virus. We understand this, but I just feel that it's constantly, we're moving skullposts on everybody. I would love, honestly, we had Dr. Johnson on. I'd love to have a child psychiatrist on also, because there was an article just in the paper the other day, Exeter has almost two hundred cases of calls of suicide, so it's a major issue. You know, we have to look, we keep on saying, people keep on saying we want them in-person. You know, we're pushing them back even farther. I just, it's got to stop. I mean, sooner or later, we have to sit there and say, you know, and follow what we're saying. We want them in-person. Let's get these guys in-person and go from there. It changes daily, but businesses are running, people are still doing things. I have two children, and I'll be honest. I mean, it's, the remote isn't really, like you say, there's, teachers aren't there, you're not signing in. It's, it's falling to the wayside. It's not as robust as it was supposed to be. It's falling apart because, you know, it is dragging out too long now. And I think it's just, we all have COVID fatigue, and the kids are too. You know, they're losing ambition to getting out there. I mean, it's wonderful that we allowed all these sports and kids to get out there. I see these kids out there excited to be someplace and be a part of something. Again, I just, I don't like pushing back any farther, so that's, that's how I feel. I'm just, again, I'm just, it's sad because we do get a lot of people emailing us, parents concerned saying, hey, you know, when are we going to get these kids back in? And again, it's frustrating to keep on saying, we're going back, we're going back, we're going back. We're pushing back, pushing back. I mean, if we're going to wait till, you know, then why don't we just say May? So people can make plans. If this we're going to keep on doing. That's how I feel.
Thank you Dave. Maggie?
Okay. I haven't said a lot on this, but I'm going to say it now. Yes, we've heard from some parents, but we've, we haven't heard from hundreds and hundreds of others. Because education isn't meant to be done remotely. It's just not, but that's what we have. And so there's going to be problems. There's going to be issues. But I'm, I'm just going to say, I want to support Dr. Ryan and the administration's decisions to do this their way. There's, there's no way this can be done correctly remotely, and we have, we have the inability to do it a hundred percent remote, so it's all, or a hundred percent in-person, I'm sorry. So as long as we have partial in-person and partial remote, there's going to be challenges. There's going to be issues. And I feel that Dr. Ryan and the administrations have bent over backwards to try to do this the best possible way. And I'm here just to say I support it. So Dr. Ryan, I'm just publicly saying I support your recommendation. You have an impossible job. And we're going to have unhappy parents. We're going to have unhappy board members, no matter what decision we do, what decision you do. I think we can, all we can do is the best we can do with a terrible, terrible situation. We don't have the capacity to go a hundred percent in-person, so you're always going to, it's going to be an issue no matter what. It's too much of a challenge for any school district to do a hundred percent correctly all the time.
Thank you Maggie. Bob?
I just want to say that I just support what Maggie has just said. We've hired Dr. Ryan and we have, we know the professionals. We've met the professionals. We've heard from the professionals. They are doing the best they can do during very difficult times. And I feel that what they prescribe for Exeter is best, and I'm, I'm, I hate to say that because I've got those, I've read those same letters and emails and phone calls of people that are completely frustrated with their children being home way too much and missing a lot of school. And I, and I also echo what Helen has said, and that is that the caliber of what's offered for these students at home, especially at the high school level, where we're moving on towards college, we need to make sure that the work is being assigned, covered, and if there's questions asked about it, that needs to be done. So I'm supportive of the administration. We need to do what's right for both our students, our teachers, their families. You know, it's, it's much more than just students and, and teachers too. It's our community. And our community needs to stay as healthy as possible. And that means if it's not good for the kids to be in school and it's not good for the teachers to be there, we should, they shouldn't be there. They need to be on remote. I hate to say that, but that's the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, and then Kim, and then Travis?
I, I just want to say, like, one thing that I want to point out, I feel very strongly about, it's not, it's not the board or the parents versus the administration or versus David Ryan. We're all on the same page. We all want what's best for kids, and David, I know you want what's best for kids. I've seen you work for a couple of years. I know you care about them. So, and Maggie and Bob, we're all on the same page. We all want to get the kids back in. We all want them to be safe. It's just, I don't, Helen, you've probably heard it too, and I know the rest of you have heard it too, where I could be out anywhere and it could be a social event, and parents approach me, and they'll tell me stories about, I just recently heard stories about CMS where I had no idea where it could be, it could be a couple of days a week or something, or it could be several teachers in a row where that the kids aren't, you know, they're not logging in, they're fifteen minutes late, or they're putting off the class altogether. I had someone in town where a parent had to go to the ER, and the ER nurse said that that the suicidal, the people that are coming in because of the suicidal ideation is up three hundred percent per week. So I, I just, like, I just want to reiterate, it's not us versus David. We care very much for David and the administration and the kids. We just want the kids back to in-person learning. I think the way to do it is Zoom in a room as we Just want the kids back to in-person learning. I think the way to do it is Zoom in a room, as we mentioned before, and that's it. Thank you for letting me speak, Helen, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim.
Uh, thank you, Helen, and thanks for, um, the invitation, Melissa, to talk. I think it's always, um, one of my favorite parts of our meetings, when I get to hear how board members feel and understand where people are coming from, and and I, I always learn so much from listening to all of you and the questions that you ask, and even if I don't agree, it makes me really consider different viewpoints, and, um, you know, I really prefer to, to do it in this manner versus, you know, hearing the way my board members feel and being sent social media postings. Um, when we've had ample opportunities to discuss things. So I think creating more space to do this is, is, uh, my preferred method. Um, I, I do agree with, with, uh, Paul that I don't think by having the EHSUs for vaccinations, it's impeding our desire to get students back, and, and I do hear your concern about having folks on the premises, but um, I'm sure that the COVID vaccination procedure is going to be probably one of the tightest, most hotly controlled uh, processes in the country with these vaccines being so limited. Um, I also believe that, um, you know, I want my kids back, I want them back yesterday, and, you know, but what I want is irrelevant, you know, what we have to do is what's safe. And I know there's a lot of debate over what's safe. There's a lot of different facts out there in the media and different websites and groups you can go to and get your facts, and I think there's a really interesting number of people who do get their news uh, from a high percentage of the time off social media, instead of really vetting independent sources, so um, I feel as a partner to the community and especially to Exeter Hospital, you know, I listen intently when the chief medical officer says, you know, the ICUs are full, that the positivity rate is at such a height that we are not in control of the virus, and it makes me mad, because I don't want that to be the case, I want to be back safely. Um, you know, I, I see my kids struggling, I, you know, and, and I, I think again, I've said this before, it looks really easy to operate a school district from the outside, and that's not making excuses, but, um, we are all doing the best we can in this situation. Can it be better? Yes. Should it be better? Yes. Will it be better? Um, I think every day we're trying. Um, and, and lastly, I'll say, you know, another thing that's exposed is, we had a horrible mental health crisis before this began, you know, as a sister who is bi- uh, had a sister who's bipolar and, and almost died. Um, you know, I, I, I've seen her have to go to the emergency room and sit there for days to get a bed. So we had a crisis before this started, and this has certainly exacerbated it. So I hope that we can continue to partner as a school district and community with those mental health professionals to get kids the help they need and to provide op- uh, opportunities like we have to do the best we can out of a horrible, terrible, tragic situation that COVID has created. Um, but I, I do agree that we need to support the professionals and the people we've hired. Um, because I would, I would panic if someone mandated that I open twenty childcare centers tomorrow, um, in my job, and I wasn't ready to do so. I would panic for the kids, I'd panic for my staff. Um, so I think, I think the administration knows where we stand, that we want these kids in school. We want them there, we wanted them there in September. And, and I just want to voice that I, I'm in support of the expertise in the direction that, um, Dr. Ryan and his team's mapping out for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Travis?
Thank you, Helen, appreciate it, and thank you to everybody for sharing all the, the thoughts, um, uh, and the conversation, Melissa, to your point, it's very much appreciated, and uh, so I wanted to belabor the conversation with a lot of the, the exact same comments, but, uh, I mean, I think two other things to add to this, and we know that people aren't going to follow all the rules over the holiday season. Um, people are going to travel, I think, Melissa, as you mentioned, people are going to gather with, with friends and family, um, which is human nature, and you know, that we're, we're all trying to do the best we can, and, and that's all we can do. But that being said, what I think causes the most um, angst for all of us, as, as parents, as educators, the administrators, uh, and our students, is the, the, when things change repeatedly. And what I mean by that is, I think the worst, what would be worse than going back on the fourteenth in person would be going back on the fourth in person, and then having to pull groups of students back out again two or three weeks later, or impact an entire school two or three weeks later because we have a cluster like Main Street had. Those, I think, cause far bigger disruptions in all of our lives, because you can't plan, you can't arrange things, you don't know what's going to happen from one day to the next. If the safest recourse after the holidays is to wait that CDC suggested waiting period before we go back in person, that's probably the best course of action, because it's the, it's the changes when we get a cluster that we've seen, and they have impacted multiple members of my own family that make it even harder. So I, I think, Dr. Ryan, your suggestion to, to follow that, and it is what's happening with you know, universities across the country, uh, UNH students aren't going back until February fourth, um, so that they have that time to, to, to not be all together again after they've um, been with family and friends over the holidays. Other school districts are doing similar things, so uh, again, not to belabor, you know, the, the same things that have been mentioned, but, you know, I think we would be better off to go back in person then and be able to stay in person, as opposed to, to bounce back and forth if a cluster were to occur, so. Um, thanks, Helen, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Travis, and I, I concur with what Travis has just said, as I mentioned earlier. I don't want you to, to think that I'm, I'm criticizing our system, not in the least, I, I just want to make sure that the kinks that we've been dealing with, uh, with regard to remote, we try to work some of those out as much as possible, so that while the youngsters are still on remote, um, that they are able to, um, get, and, and I agree with Maggie, there's no perfect answer there, to get the best quality that they possibly can um, and, and take the time to try to, to work those out. There's one last item that I am going to address, uh, with regard to Melissa's, uh, suggestion with regard to the room and Zoom, and Melissa, I'm assuming that what you mean by that is the synchronized teaching where you have, uh, the, um, remote going on, students who are home on remote, stream, live streaming into classroom. We have had numerous, numerous emails from parents asking why this cannot be done, and, and we have spoken to this, uh, I know Dr. Ryan has addressed it with regard to privacy issues, with regard to sustaining it for teachers not being able to do it. I would like to share with you, I'm, 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 I'm a former teacher, social studies, high school teacher myself. And I, first, Melissa, I'll be honest with you, I felt the same way, you know, come on, this is the way to go, you know, let, why, why can't we do this, and then Dr. Ryan explained some of the reasons, and I was still somewhat skeptical, but I'm going to share with you. I have been in contact with several of my former colleagues who are doing this now. They said it is an absolute nightmare on a number of levels. Um, I could list a whole host of reasons, but the bottom line is, the teachers are not able to concentrate fully with the youngsters who are on remote and with the kids who are sitting in front of them. Some of these teachers have been doing this since October. The kids, the kids who were in person, their education has been, been diminished, as have the youngsters who were at home on remote. The kids on remote are not necessarily engaging. They turn their cameras off, I, I guess there's ways around that, but they turn their cameras off, some of them are not taking part in lessons. They're teaching a lesson to the kids in front of them, and when they go to try to help the kids who are on remote, they're losing the kids that are present. Um, one teacher told me that half of her kids who are on remote, who are in this situation are failing her course for this very reason. Um, they have to leave the kids who are in the classroom to go to check the chat box, to make sure that the kids who are at home are, have their questions answered. We are in a situation in our schools where we do a lot of project work, and it's almost impossible to engage the kids who are at home with the youngsters in the classroom in terms of doing project work, et cetera. So I share these things with you only because I'm hearing this from people who are currently living it. And, you know, it's giving me pause for thought, to be honest with you, in terms of whether that is the best way to go. Because I feel if we don't have, based on what they're telling me, not having dedicated teachers to the youngsters who were solely remote, dedicated teachers to the kids who are in person, both groups lose out. So I just wanted to share that with this board and with the public who are listening. Um, believe me, if we could, if, if it would work, I would be all in favor of it, but from everything that I'm hearing from these folks who are living it right now, they are saying to me, whatever you do, share that with your folks, because it's not, it's not working. So. All right, any, uh, anybody beside, before I go back to Melissa, anybody else want to comment? Yes, Kathy, and then I'll come back to Melissa, certainly.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to take, say two things. One, I, I think we, a, a lot of people have said it, we need to respect our administrators and our teachers and what's going on and, and really listen to them. But the other thing I wanted to address is in regards to, um, the administrating of the, um, coronavirus shots at our school. If you think about it, if we can get the first level of all of the medical people to have their vaccinations, and then the teachers in the school, that'll be a tremendous help if we're on the first line to do that. The sooner we can get our kids back to school, so that's another thing to think of. In the distance between now and the time that the school year's over, if we have everybody vaccinated that teaches in the school, that'll help, and that will prevent a lot of this from happening next year. Um, and again, I do support Mr. Ryan and everybody else that's trying to get us back to school, and you have to respect these administrators and what they're doing. And I thank you for all you're doing, I know it's not easy.
Thank you, Kathy. Melissa, did you want to add one more thing before we move on?
I do, I just want you to, I, I want you to walk me through this, so. You know, what's, I, I hear what you're saying about the teachers, people have reached out to you and said that it's a nightmare, right, to, to teach remotely while they're in the classroom, right, or to do both.
Right.
Hard, because I've received so much feedback from parents where they're telling me that the teachers are going into the classroom to teach from the school, and then the parents are getting a little bit frustrated. Um, but I guess, like, I have a couple of questions for you. I get that it would be awful, I get that it wouldn't be fun, right? Um, and, and I heard you say it would be a nightmare, but it's a nightmare for the kids too, it's been since March, like, they're I just feel like psychologically they're a mess, and we're talking about how the kids, you're don't misunderstand me, like, elementary, I don't think is the place for this, because how, how would you ever manage elementary kids in person and online, but middle and high school, if we're saying that we're losing the kids that are online, they're not staying engaged because they're blocking out their screen, or they're doing other things after ten minutes, what's happening if they're full remote? Like, how is that, how is that any different? I just, for me personally, like, I just, I genuinely don't understand. Like, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I have, you, you heard me say it a thousand times already, my own kids are doing it. Even more doing it, and they're, and they're doing it successfully, like, I, and I don't understand, why do you need the chat function, why, that, they've got a big plasma screen, we got two hundred bucks per kid that we could use for these screens in the classrooms, they raise their hand, you'll see their hand up on the screen. You can't, I've heard this too, about the group projects, they can't do group projects right now anyway, because they can't be that close together. I just, I just genuinely don't understand. And it's frustrating to me when I sit here, because I understand, I see the eyes rolling, I see people, you know, getting annoyed, and you're saying, you know, anyone besides Melissa, and, and I, and I respect you, I'm not putting you down in any way. Um, I just genuinely don't understand, I just, I get it, I get it would stink, or excuse my language, suck. But why can't we do this for three or four months for the kids, just to get us through the year? Everything about this pandemic stinks. Let's just suffer through this, do the room and Zoom, keep the ones that are immunocompromised home, or the parents that are very concerned. Let them keep their kids home, and let's figure this out so we can open up the school, that's all I'm trying to say.
Melissa, I just want to correct something you just said, in, in, with all due respect, I didn't say anyone besides Melissa. I was giving Kathy an opportunity to speak because she had not had a chance to speak. And I was asking to, to allow her to speak before you. I also, I'm going to be honest with you, I have not seen one person in this, on this Zoom meeting roll their eyes at you, but uh, if I miss something, I apologize for that, but I have not seen any of that. All right.
I'll email you later.
All right, let's move on, um, Da- Da- Dr. Ryan, have you received, I think you've received more than enough input from us on this, does that help you?
It does very much, thank you very much for the support, I believe that that is going to be the direction that we move in.
Thank you very much, all right, appreciate. Um, principals reports, uh, Mr. Monahan, would you like to report out on the high school?
Yeah, um, yes, um, good evening, I just wanted to highlight a few things, um, wanted to, uh, commend our, uh, guidance, guidance department for the hard work they've been doing, um, with the kids, uh, particularly, uh, working through the, uh, college process with, um, the seniors, there's been literally thousands of college applications processed and lots of, uh, meetings with, with seniors, uh, for, you know, next steps and whatnot, um, as, as well as other supportive, um, social emotional things with, uh, aren't a classroom, but the guidance department's been doing yeoman's work, to say the least. They developed a, uh, a new updated site. There was a lot of different resources for, for people to reach out to, so I wanted to commend them. Um, in our math department, our math team, uh, got together and got to compete in a math meet. Um, about a twelve, fifteen kids came to the high school after school and were in the library. They were competing virtually with other schools in the tri-state math league, but that was great, they got third place, so it was great, those kids got to interact, uh, in a safe manner, uh, but do something that was, um, you know, important to them, so that was great to see. Um, our science department has really done a great job, uh, engaging kids, uh, in a virtual, uh, platforms in and around experimentation. Um, they're using, uh, some different platforms, Gizmo amongst our biology teachers, and, uh, 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 pivot interact physics, uh, kids amongst others, and anatomy and physiology, so they're really doing a nice job um, uh, in, in this environment to engage kids. Um, also wanted to point out, having, uh, our National Honor Society induction is going to happen, uh, tomorrow, uh, in two two cohorts, we'll set them up, split them up, we'll do it safely, uh, and we're going to livestream that for the parents to see, so, um, that's nice to be able to honor those kids, and, uh, again, add in one of those more normal things for our kids, and, uh, as we endeavor to, to, to move forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and please thank your faculty as well for all of their hard work, we appreciate it. Uh, any questions for Mr. Monahan? All right then, thank you. Patty, CMS?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I know that the last month I, uh, talked about Audrey Penn being, uh, recognized as the New Hampshire World Language Teacher of the Year, so it's very exciting, and she'll be, uh, awarded, uh, in the spring, hopefully. Um, I do want to speak to our student council under the advisors of, uh, Ben Clapp and Patrick Joyce. Uh, they continue to meet with the students, and they'll have students uh, with their meetings after school, and they also allow for kids to, uh, join in remotely as well. And, uh, they have worked really hard prior to the Thanksgiving holiday um, to, uh, organize a canned food drive. And, uh, we spread our messages to all of our parents and community, and they set up, there's some pictures in the packet, but they set up a really great, like, big treasure chest that Patrick Joyce brought in, and, um, families would just drop off canned food in the vestibule area. And, um, they were able to just really, um, donate a significant amount of food and toiletries to, um, Seacoast Family Promise and to do, and to the New Generation Women Shelter, so, uh, just want to say how proud we are of the students and, um, and of course, uh, Mr. Joyce and Mr. Clapp for leading their efforts in our community for supporting it. I also want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Jim Rupp, who is our, um, LEGO advisor. This is the second year out in a row that Jim has been awarded the, uh, Robotics Education Fund Grant. And, um, we just found out a week or so ago that he was awarded nine hundred and thirty dollars, which he's really excited about, to buy more, um, robotics kits and parts and tools and other expenses for our, uh, competition team, our, uh, robotics team, and uh, they might have a virtual competition, but the kids come in every Friday for about an hour, hour and a half. Um, and, and they work on, uh, their robotics projects, so we're really excited for them and really proud of all their efforts. And then, uh, always this time of year, um, the middle school, um, has organized a holiday drive, um, to help our families in the community in need, and because of COVID nineteen, uh, we weren't able to, um, have the gift drive at our school, but instead, under the leadership of Jamie Soller, our director of school counselors, and Morgan Cini, our social worker, they partnered with St. Michael's Parish. And what we did this year is we reached out to our school families. And what we did this year is we reached out to our school families and asked our families to sponsor a family or a child from St. Michael's Parish and to buy their gifts and to do the drop-off at St. Michael's. So we're really kind of excited about this new partnership that we've created in our school community to help our families in need. And again, we just continue to appreciate the generosity of our families. And then just lastly, that's not a part of my report, but I just wanted to speak to, I know that there have been a lot of letters, both to myself, to the board, to Dr. Ryan regarding remote. You know, hearing such things as that it's falling off the wayside or that there's COVID fatigue. I guess without sounding defensive, I feel like I need to defend and honor our teachers because they work incredibly hard. I don't feel that our teachers are suffering COVID fatigue, but rather it was the shift, and I just want to remind all the folks, parents, families. I'm trying not to, I'm not taking this personally, but you know, I'm a mom, I have three children. I've been an educator for 29 years and I'm proud of my reputation, which is my work ethic and how I lead on my values, my morals, my ethics. And to receive emails that say that I am kicking children to the curb who are remote learners is hurtful. And I know that people feel powerful behind a keyboard, but I will say that I think it's cowardly. In my five years as principal of the Cooperative Middle School, I've been proud. I've been proud to be, but Mike Morgan told me, the first woman principal at the Cooperative Middle School. Very proud. And I think it is cowardly to send emails about me, to Commissioner Edelblut, to Governor Sununu, without copying me on an email, is cowardly. I have opened my door and I have said from day one that my door is open. I will have a difficult conversation with any parent. And parents know, because I say it all the time, I am on the side of the child. That's my side. The child and every child at the Cooperative Middle School. We are in a pandemic. I know that people are tired of hearing that. We're not making excuses, but this is hard. And I would say that remote learning was actually going beautifully well. Our teachers worked so hard over the summer to prepare a program because we heard loud and clear last March that we were building the plane as we were flying it and it was unorganized and we owned that. And we worked hard to create a program for our students. And I am proud of the program that our teachers did create. But we also heard that our kids wanted to come back to school. We wanted our kids back to school. We had our Community Care Center up and running. Sonia Roche and Jen Casborn have worked tirelessly in getting our students back for their services. And that has been going really well. We heard our, you know, we created the schedule, we moved up our date, we heard that. But I will tell you, and I'm not trying to make an excuse, we usually have two to three months to create over a thousand schedules in the summer through Power School, our student management system. We had three days. Because you can't have Power School live and also change it at the same time and teachers not have access to it and students and parents not have access to it. That work all happened over Thanksgiving. And yes, that day back, it wasn't finished, it wasn't complete because we needed more than three days. But we had a brave face on, we welcomed our children, the kids had fun. Yes, it, it was a mess, but also during that time, we went from 28% to about 44% of families shifting, that they didn't want to be in person, they wanted to be remote. So now what happened was, what we thought we could keep our kids on team, we thought we could make everybody happy, teachers would teach one class remote and three classes in person, all of a sudden shifted, where parents didn't want to come in person. They wanted to be in remote, they were afraid. There's nothing wrong with that. That's their child, that's their right to make that decision. So we were trying to appease everybody and make everybody happy. And with that, all of a sudden, we knew we had classes of 54 students. That's not okay. And I know that parents are upset, upset, and children felt like they were kicked to the curb, that no one cared about the remote students, that all I cared about were the in-person students. That is not true. I care about every single one of my kids at the Cooperative Middle School. So now we are in this mess of relooking at it and saying, okay, we went back to the teachers and we started to absorb classes, we started to pull teachers to say, you're now going to teach this, you're going to have two remote classes and three live classes. Teachers are being, teaching different grade levels. I have teachers co-teaching classes of the 54 so we can break them down into two groups. That is the reality. I have, I must have received eight emails myself, Melanie Faulkner received probably up to 10 of more parents wanting to switch to remote learning because they're afraid. Our response has been, and this is not popular either, I can't between now and December 23rd create a remote schedule for that child. I have nowhere to put them. Because I have to go back and look and now kids, some kids have three teachers from three different teams or four different teams. You put math in there, you put in Spanish and Latin and all the wonderful course offerings that we have, but I can't take a teacher and divide that teacher in half and make that teacher be at two places at the same time. That is not possible. So we are a work in progress. We care about each of our kids. We have, we feel addressed, we've corrected the schedules so that the remote classes are not huge. We have co-teachers, we created new sections. But I want to be clear that I care about every single child and we work very hard, mostly seven days a week. And I respond to every email, I call every parent and I would ask, call me, I will talk to you. You may not, I may not have the answer that you want to hear today, but we're working toward having all of our students come back to school. That is our goal. But we have to show kindness and empathy toward each other. This is not working. hateful, mean remarks about people, it's not helping anybody. We need to come together and show courageous leadership. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you for sharing that with the parents who are watching and with the public. And I don't believe there's anyone on this board, yes.
Thank you very much.
I don't believe there's anyone on this board who has any doubt that the teachers and the administrators are working as hard as they possibly can. And I want to echo one, one comment that you made, which I do not disagree with. This board receives numerous emails with regard to complaints, concerns. Concerns is a better word than complaints, forgive me. Concerns with regard to individual issues that, that their children are facing. Yet they send the emails to us as a board to voice their concerns, which is certainly their right to do, but they don't include Patty or the building administrators, whoever it may be on those emails. So, you know, we're looking at it and say, we don't, we don't deal with the individual schedule of a student. So I'm asking parents, and I think Patty, your suggestion is a good one, to directly, if you have a concern, to directly contact the building administrator, Dr. Ryan. I'm not saying to exclude the board on that, but they need to be hearing what the individual issues are for your child. Whereas this board does not have the ability to be able to do that and to answer your questions. So I appreciate your honesty and don't be afraid to show your emotions, Patty. We've all, we're all there at this point in time. Any other questions for or comments for Patty? All right then, thank you. Oh, yes, okay, Kathy?
I just want to say thank you for sharing. It was very, very well said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, we will move now to Sharon Wilson, who will report out on SST.
All right, well, thank you. So I believe this is week 14 of an action-filled year at SST. I will start off by saying how amazing it was that FFA, our CTSO from animal and plant, was able to participate in the holiday drive-through reverse parade. They are the longest-running competitors and the most winning participants as well. So it was really special that they got to participate. That program has had a lot of events that they do just canceled because of the pandemic. So it was great to have something so important to them, you know, modified so that they could participate. It really made my heart, heartfelt for them. One thing that we've seen this year at SST is an increase in school spirit. Normally, students participate in spirit days at their own schools. But this year, they've started some spirit days at SST. So last Friday was our first pajama day. They, students and faculty paid a dollar to wear pajamas and the money went towards marketing's food drive. And Careers in Education is having three days next week just to try and promote school spirit and just joyfulness. And having come from a comprehensive high school, it really warms my heart to see the different programs coming together like this. So that's been pretty great. We are working on the NASA project, we had another meeting the other day, and it's going to blow your socks off, what they're creating, what they're designing. It's just mind-blowing, to be quite honest. Today, I got to go to Market Basket with marketing. Marketing had worked on the full implementation, marketing development of a food drive. And because of COVID, instead of having the actual food brought into SST, they were taking monetary donations. And then they called St. Vincent de Paul and went over to see that, to make sure that they were getting the right items. And then Mrs. Coopney took them over to Market Basket on our job site class and divided them in teams so that they each had to work and buy certain dollar amounts. So they raised $640. So it was really pretty fantastic to see the whole project go from start to finish. And I hope that next year she actually keeps it the same where they go over and purchase the items instead of the canned food drives because it was just nice to see the kids come full circle. And last, but not least, and this exciting news I share with Mr. Monahan. Last spring, the New Hampshire Department of Military Affairs, the New Hampshire Employment Security Group and the New Hampshire Military Leadership Team joined together to have a logo design contest for students in grades six through 12 to better align military and veteran families with businesses and employment opportunities. And Michael's and my senior, Sophia Phillips, won the logo design. And we both really were quite impressed with it. It is a kind of distressed-looking American flag with the, the stripes pointing downward. And then over it, you have like an inlay of the state of New Hampshire. And then in the most solid color, you see the profile of a, of a military member. And it really is quite striking and quite effective and just an incredible sample and recognition of some of the amazing work that goes on by our students and in Christine Grolla's program.
Thank you, Sharon. Sounds like, as always, great things happening at SST and we appreciate that report. Are there any questions or comments for Sharon from the board? All right then, thank you, Sharon, so much. Going to move on to my report, I just have a couple of items here. One is you're going to be hearing more about this. We have our joint, joint board meeting, I believe, Monday evening. Am I right on that, Dr. Ryan and Travis? Okay, so we're going to be hearing more about the superintendent evaluation for this coming year. But I just wanted to quickly report out to you, we held our meeting in November, the committee. And a couple of things that will be discussed on Monday evening. Dr. Ryan had submitted his goals and the committee suggested that we present these goals to the joint board and to add supporting objectives for each of the goals in that presentation. So we'll be hearing, as I said, more about that. The committee discussed the issue with regard to the senior leadership team because we know this has been an ongoing problem with doing evaluations. We have the good fortune as the co-op board to be working directly with Dr. Ryan, but other boards are working with other assistant superintendents, et cetera. So we're, we're trying to come up with a plan where they will, Dr. Ryan will seek structured input from each district board on their respective leadership team member so that he is better able to write evaluations and make that part of the overall evaluation process. We are going to look at, I think you'll be happy to hear this, streamlining the document that's used with regard to some of the guidelines that we use to do the evaluation. I think the consensus was that it's somewhat cumbersome and that we're going to try to do something to make that a little bit more user-friendly. And last but not least, we are going to be doing a mid-year evaluation. This board will be meeting at some point in February in a non-public session due to the late start, we moved it from January to February. We're not going to be doing any mid-year surveys with regard to building principals and other, other groups, but it will just be the board doing a synopsis, if you will, evaluation and then a more detailed one at the end of the year. So more to come on Monday evening as Tim Galitsky, who's our chair, will be reporting out on that and sharing more with you. And some other good news, as far as my report is concerned, it's Willwright Scholarship time. And as you know, this board has sponsored three scholarships each year for a four-year, a student going on to a four-year college, two-year college and trade school. And currently, we have a balance, and thanks to Molly for looking that up for us, $491,680 in that scholarship account. So I have to report to guidance tomorrow on whether or not, first of all, the board wants to continue to offer those scholarships and do we want to offer those scholarships in the same amount of money? So I will, in the past, it's been $2,000, sorry, for each of those scholarships. So are there any comments or questions with regard to that? Bob?
I would like to continue with the three scholarships of $2,000 each.
Right, great, thank you. Bob, are you willing to continue as a member of that selection committee? You've done a great job the last couple of years.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments with regard to the scholarship? Travis?
I just, I would agree with Bob. I think it's important that we keep the structure in place and award the same three that we have been for the past few years. I think it's important. that we have been for the past few years. I think it's important.
Great, thank you. Molly, do we need to vote on this tonight, or do we do this at the? I thought, for some reason, we did this in the spring after the scholarships were awarded. We took a formal vote on expending the, the money. Is that right?
I believe we did it in the spring.
Right. All right, so if there's no objection, then I will notify, uh, Lisa in guidance tomorrow that we are going to go ahead with the plan. And I'm sure Bob, you'll be hearing from them. Believe it or not, we're already talking about, um, kids applying for scholarships. It's coming down the road after, after the holidays, so thank you so much. That's great. All right, I think what I'm gonna do, uh, before we move to the financial report, I'm gonna ask Dr. Ryan, if you would open the chat box for us, please. And I'm going to ask those members of the public who are, um, who would like to make comments, please make sure that it's in the form of a comment and not a question. Uh, any questions that you have with regard to, um, any of the building issues? You need to direct those, uh, to the building administrators. And we will get, when we get to public input at the end, we will see what's, what's in there, okay? Thank you so much. Uh, financial report. Molly, you're on.
So in your board pack, we did include a financial. And it's showing, uh, about four point two eight nine million unencumbered. So that's the available money to spend. It's pretty much the exact same amount of money as we reported last time, um, with the change that we do have about a million dollars in unanticipated revenue between the COVID money, as well as some health trust money that we'll be hearing more about in January. Unfortunately, that was finalized after the public hearing was posted, so we'll be hearing about that when we can post appropriately for that in January. Um, did anyone have any questions on the current year's financial? There are no lines overspent. I think we're in a very good position at this point in time. As the year progresses, we'll have more encumbered and more actuals. But we've encumbered everything that we know year-to-date. And right now, no lines overspent, and I think it's in a very healthy position.
Thank you, Molly, on, on that particular item. Any questions for Molly on the current financial statement? All right, Molly? Uh, do you want to move on to, uh, the vote on the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
Yep, so the budget, I don't believe we included anything in the pack because it's the exact same budget that we talked about last week in the budget workshop. So all of that information, everything is unchanged at this point in time.
Alrighty. Any further comments before we vote on the bottom-dollar line figure on that? And keep in mind, this is still going to be discussed further at our hearing on January 5th, and it can be amended at that particular meeting. Travis?
Thank you, Helen, I appreciate it. Um, so just a, a question, or, or again, maybe just to hear some thoughts from the board members. Uh, I know I voiced, uh, at our last board meeting, and again, at the budget workshop. Uh, and let me preface by stating, uh, in, in the clearest words possible, I am fully supportive of the DEIJ position. Uh, I think it's, it's well past due. I think we should have done something like this five years ago. Um, I think Dr. Ryan has, has done a tremendous job bringing this to the forefront and, um, you know, working to, to improve SU-16's performance in this area. Um, so, so I'm a hundred percent supportive of, of the initiative, of the role of bringing it into the district. I do question, though, bringing in that level of expense this particular budget cycle. Uh, I just, I, I worry that the economics, uh, that we're in right now and the, the suffering that a lot of our, our families within the districts are, are in financially, uh, is this the best year for us to bring in, uh, a hundred thousand dollar administrative position? So I just wanted to, to put that on the table, uh, again, to be clear. A hundred percent supportive of the role. Um, and again, Dr. Ryan, I think he's done a, a tremendous job getting us to this point. Uh, I just wonder if it's, if it's bad timing, given where we're at in, in the current economic environment. So I just wanted to, to ask that question and see if anybody had any other thoughts there.
Thank you, Travis. Anybody else want to comment on that particular issue? Yes, Kathy?
I agree. I'm not sure that this is the time to bring that in. It's an expense I'm not sure we need to do right now.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Travis?
And, and now just, I, I, nobody will hurt my feelings if you disagree with me. I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence myself, but I just, uh, I, I don't know that this is the time to do it. And, you know, Dr. Ryan, I'd love to hear your thoughts as, as well. But, uh, I just thought it important enough, and we have had some, some community members reach out to us that, um, in both, you know, very positive light, that there's something was, you know, overdue. Uh, and we've also had a number reach out to us to say that this maybe isn't the right year to, to, to spend that money on that position. So, um, just wanted to hear people's thoughts, and it won't hurt my feelings either way, that's for sure.
I, I, I would echo what Travis has said, that we have received numerous, um, letters of support for this position. And I one hundred percent agree with what he's saying with regard to supporting this. It's long overdue. It, it is something that is sorely needed in our, um, in our schools. At the same time, I'm, we're, we're also hearing from families and parents who, taxpayers who are hurting right now, and who feel that, while they support it as well, that perhaps postponing this another year or not in this cycle might be, uh, in the best interest of those folks who are, um, uh, not in a position, if you will, to be able to, uh, support this financially. So it's, it's a tough call. It's a rock-hard-play situation. I agree with you, Travis. Paul, you had your hand out.
Thank you, Helen. Um, a, a couple of things that I'd, I'd point out on this. Um, first of all, this is a reminder, there is a, a position that's being eliminated. Um, I, I believe it's CMS, which isn't, it doesn't exactly offset the cost of the new position, but offsets a lot of the cost of it. Um, and I'm sure Molly could give us the exact numbers. I remember it was on part of her presentation, how that, how that offset worked. Um, but th- there is the offset to keep in mind from that. Um, also, and, and I realize, Travis, you're, you're not in any way saying that this position isn't warranted or needed within the SAU. Um, but I, you know, I, I would chime in to say, I, I think there is a great need for this position. Um, I, I think it's an important thing for our district to be doing. Um, you know, particularly, you know, we are, uh, an, a state, really, but a district too, that does not have a lot of diversity. And, and because of that, having the education and, and, you know, preparing our students for life outside of the co-op is, is very important. And it's something I experienced firsthand, is as someone who went to high school in Dover, uh, where, again, not a lot of diversity. Um, so I, I, I a hundred percent support this position, and, and just want to remind of the, the offset costs, um, with the other position that's being eliminated.
I, I believe the amount, if I remember correctly, in terms of the actual cost with the elimination of the position was around eleven thousand dollars. Am I correct on that, Molly?
Yeah, that's correct, but that's salary-only. So the DEIJ position is, is in an eighty-six thousand dollars in base salary. That's before FICA and retirement.
Okay. Thank you. Um, other comments? Melissa, did you have your hand raised? I'm assuming that's a no, okay? Anybody else want to comment with regard to this position? Bob?
Uh, yes, I'd like to echo what Paul just said. I, I feel that this district, uh, really does need this position. I hear the financial restraints that we're going through. But as we prepare our students for the future, we need to make them better citizens. And by making them better citizens, we need, we need to provide an environment that ex, that expands what we have in Exeter. Because Exeter is not representative of our country as a whole. And America is not Exeter. But Exeter can look like America if we take a look at the composition and what's going on in America today. So I think, I think it, I think it's something we would be helping our students for the future if we adopted this position and had this person online. And reminder, this person's gonna be working from K through twelve, so all students in the district will benefit, not just the co-op. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else want to comment on this? Travis, then Kathy?
Yeah, no, I just want to thank everybody. I, I appreciate the, the, the comments and the conversation. And, and, you know, Paul certainly, I have the utmost respect for you and, and appreciate your comments there, and, and Bob, you as well. And, uh, like I said, I, I, I'm on the fence on this, but I just thought it was important and appropriate to have the conversation. And, uh, you know, I've, I've seen some of the, uh, comments on the chat as well from some folks. Um, you know, very, some of the, the positive comments about why the role is important. Um, so that, that, that helps me out a lot. I just appreciate the opportunity to hear some thoughts. Um, there's also a few comments that maybe Helen, we don't need to read because they've got some foul language, but we'll, we'll leave you to manage that.
No, we won't do that. We will not read. Uh, just a reminder, folks, to please be polite. I'm not gonna read anything that does include any foul language or, or, uh, anything along those lines. Thank you, Travis. Maggie?
Yeah, I mean, I won't repeat what everybody else said, other than I, I support hiring the position. I think there's always gonna be a reason to delay and put off. I think it's just, it, the, the time to take this responsibility seriously and move it forward. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Kathy?
Are we voting on this?
We're voting on the bottom line of the budget that's gonna be presented at the hearing. The hearing is January 5th. And again, at that hearing, we can still amend or make changes that evening. Whatever happens at the hearing is what goes on the warrant. So tonight is just to give our, the recommended amount that we will be giving to Molly to present at the hearing on January 5th.
And do our parents and families know exactly what this position entitles and how it's gonna be presented to our kids?
That I'm not sure about. David, could you answer that? Dr. Ryan?
I'm sorry, Kathy, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, I, I just want to know, do the parents know how this, what this parent, this position entails and how the program is going to be presented to the kids in all age groups?
Um, so right now, each school has a diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice team, all of our schools. Um, right now, they're working through training. We have professional consultants working on training. There's gonna be a review of curriculum to ensure that we're broadening curriculum to incorporate, uh, more diverse thinking and backgrounds around it. Um, this position is really more of a facilitator of training at the adult level and working with, uh, teachers, administrators, board members across the SAU on how we're, uh, building a more equitable and just, uh, school system. Um, it's gonna incorporate review and audit, I said, uh, curriculum, but also policy, uh, of also practices, uh, of our student code of conduct. Um, really helping people understand, uh, their ability, um, to accept all human differences and celebrate the differences that everybody brings in a respectful, thoughtful way. It's not activism, um, it's not, um, it's not going in to start, uh, to get students to protest or, uh, arrange things like that. Uh, this is more about expanding knowledge base and giving students and staff members the, the ability to really think more about their own bias and how they can, um, shed some of that as they move through a really, uh, different world that we live in now. Um, I'm seeing some of the, uh, comments in the chat that, you know, it's, it's more than just about race. This is really about divergent thinking. Uh, we couldn't be more divided now, um, in our country and being able to be respectful of what people bring to their opinions and their thoughts based on their backgrounds and their experiences. Uh, but also regarding social orientation. Students who, um, are, uh, working through a transformation, whether they be identifying as transgender students or, or openly gay students, um, um, you know, really being able to arm and support all of our staff members, as well as our community members, on how to help young people work through that. And then when they graduate, whether they remain in the community or move out of, uh, the Exeter region, uh, still be able to thrive, support, and participate in a more global community. So that's, that's really what the position is designed to do.
Okay, but I just wanted to know that our parents know what this is. I mean, and how that's gonna be presented to their kids.
So we haven't sent a, a letter out to a, a parent, uh, about this. We've only communicated publicly with the board, uh, with, uh, all of our boards, as well as, uh, been very open in our discussions, um, uh, at our board meetings, as well as creating a web presence, so.
Okay.
We're still, still building towards that. We naturally won't have a position unless this board approves to fund it. And then in March, uh, the voters would need to approve, um, the position as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any other questions or comments? Okay, what I'm going to ask from Molly is a bottom-line figure, Molly, that we are voting on. If you could give us the exact figure, please?
Yep, so the total would be sixty-five million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Sixty-five million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, and would you, what was the last part, please?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty. Sixty-five million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So what we are voting on tonight, this is the amount that we are going to be presenting along with the entire budget at our hearing on January 5th. And again, I remind you that that evening, just as we did last year, that can be amended by the board, and we will have public input in a hearing, uh, with the public being present for that. So do I have a motion from this board? And this would include that particular, uh, the, the position that we've just been talking about. Uh, do I have a motion from the board to bring forwards the sixty-five million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for our budget hearing? Maggie? Thank you. Do we have a second on that? Travis? Thank you very, thank you. All right, uh, I will poll the board on this. I am an I. Melissa?
Um, no.
Thank you. Um, Travis?
Aye.
Thank you. Maggie?
Aye, yes.
Paul?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Dave?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Bob?
Aye.
Melissa, uh, I already asked Melissa, sorry. Kathy? Kathy?
That was a no.
No, thank you. All right then, so the vote is, uh, six in favor, three opposed. Are there any abstentions? I don't believe so. All right. Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, I would assume at this point in time, too, Molly, you would like us to vote on the hearing items?
Uh, to accept the unanticipated revenue?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to do those two separately? The supplemental public school response fund first, and then the Martha La Perro Fund?
Sure.
All right, so we would need a motion to accept the supplemental public school response fund of six hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. Do we have a motion to accept that? Travis, thank you. Second? Bob? Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on that? All right then, we will vote on that as well. I am an aye. Let me just get my little, uh, I'm sorry. All right, um, Travis?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Dave? I'm sorry, Dave Slifka? I didn't hear you, Dave, so.
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. Melissa?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
All right, did I get everybody?
Oh, Bob.
Bob, I'm sorry, Bob, how could I forget?
I'm an aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's unanimous. And the last item to vote on with regard to this is the very generous donation, and we thank them again, the anonymous donation of fifteen thousand dollars for the Martha La Perro Fund. Um, is there any, just, I need a motion first, I'm sorry. A motion to accept it? Paul, thank you. Bob, you're gonna second it for us?
Yes, yes.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll, we'll vote. Travis?
Aye, and thank you to the anonymous donor.
Absolutely. Uh, Maggie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so that would be another unanimous, uh, vote on that one. Thank you. Um, any other? Um any other questions for Molly before I dismiss all of the administrators? Bob, question?
I I had no, no question, just a statement. That is, I just wanted to thank Molly and and her team for going through and collecting all this information that was allowed us to receive this money, this COVID money. So thank you very much, Molly.
I see how hard Molly and Michelle work in that office every time I go in to sign manifests, so it's a a good effort on on both of your parts and the rest of your team. And thank you so much. And to Dr. Ryan as well for all of this. So uh for our administrators who would like to leave, we're going to move to our uh just a couple of short uh committee reports. So feel free and wish you all happy holidays. Get some rest and uh thank you again for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you. Good night. All right, we're going to move to our facilities report. Uh Paul? Would you like to share with us?
I would. Thank you, Helen. Um so the facilities committee met uh this evening prior to our full board meeting. We had four agenda items. Uh first, our our standing item of the CMS renewal project. Um Mr. Wendell updated us that the things continue to to go well there. Um they're they're of course getting things buttoned up for winter weather. Um closing up the building envelope, as he said, making it weather tight to make sure that the construction on the interior can continue during the winter months. Um the testing has been ongoing with with, you know, masonry, concrete, fireproofing, waterproofing. Um all that's going well. And according to plan, the project remains within the contingency and still remains uh on time, uh as we've talked about trending ahead of schedule. So everything is good there and continuing to progress nicely. Uh we we had a a follow-up conversation about the uh solar array at Exeter High School. And uh as a reminder, we at the last meeting had a a student, Camille Weber, give us a fantastic presentation about a lot of research she's done into expanding the solar solar array at the high school campus. So we had a conversation with Mr. Lister and Mr. Wendell about um, you know, what more information we would need to to con- consider this, uh consider this project uh to go forward. Um and it's essentially what it comes down to, it is trying to get a sense of what would be the best location. Uh there's some talk about, you know, the the roof of the building and also various ground locations that may work. Um we we talked a bit about specifically, you know, the the roof and issues that would have to be run through with constructional engineers and things that have been looked at in the past in terms of putting solar panels on the roof of the high school that raised some concerns. So, you know, wanting to to give due consideration to those ground options as well. And and obviously, the other thing, we really want to make sure we have a firm grasp on before we, you know, think about whether this is something we can move forward with is any kind of upfront costs costs that would exist in terms of, you know, having to hire engineers to look into things or in terms of setting up the solar panels to connect with the the existing array. Um so Mr. Lister said he's going to look into that. And then when he has more information to provide us, then um the committee will hear that and and uh you know, of course, share that with the full board. Uh we also talked about um Mr. Lister had mentioned while we were doing the the budgeting process um that he had some some planned uses of project funds for the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So we talked a bit about what those were and and, you know, he looks to continue with paving at the high school that's been ongoing. Um there's a the security upgrade that'll be done at the middle school. Um and then various other things such as the the library carpet, CMS is long overdue to be replaced. Um we've been incrementally working on replacing pavers in the high school courtyard. Um so various projects like that, uh fence at the high school stadium that that's in need of replacement. Uh so we talked through kind of that list. And then the final agenda item we had was to talk about the proposed renovation of locker areas at Exeter High School. And this is a project that we we've talked about off and on for for a while. Um and you'll recall that some funds were earmarked out of the unassigned fund balance um to to go towards this project. I know that we, you know, have had an architect draw plans in the past. We've got some uh sense of a a a construction budget. Uh really what remains now is for Dr. Ryan and his team to kind of take a look at scope of project and and, you know, there are various funding ideas and and figure out what what it is that they might want to propose for the for the board to consider. Um so the there'll be more to hear on that as we go forward. Um I just didn't want it to fall off the radar because I know it is an important project for the high school. So that's all we talked about this evening.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any questions for Paul or Rusty? Thank you, Rusty, for staying so late and for your input tonight. We appreciate it. And thank you, Paul. You always do a great job on your minutes as well. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, financial report. Um I believe that Travis, uh did we cover everything already? Or do you have anything else you want to add for us?
Uh just two very brief things, Helen. Uh Molly covered uh all the important things like the the money that's coming to us as unanticipated revenue, so that that was certainly good. Uh but two very brief things. Uh the um property that the district owns uh on the Kensington Exeter line um has been officially put on the market, uh so it is officially listed and up for sale. Um the realtor who's working with Molly on that um also did uh wanted to let us know that while houses are selling at a very brisk pace, uh in a lot of cases, land uh maybe is not. Um so we we may not expect a very quick sale on that, but you never know. We will see what happens, but uh it is officially on the market for uh Molly, correct me, I believe, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars um off versus a purchase price many years back of three hundred thousand. So um we will see if we're able to uh to at least get a return on our investment there. And then the only other item to mention, uh and I'll certainly defer to to Dr. Ryan and to Molly. Um but because we did not note the health trust money coming back to us on the public hearing agenda, we will have to post it as another public hearing with that item noted specifically. Uh so for a ten or fifteen minute window of time before our next co-op board meeting, Helen, we will have to have an another public hearing to accept uh what I believe I wrote down is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars of unanticipated revenue coming back to us from the health trust due to uh people not using insurance as much this year. So Molly, did that capture that correctly?
Yeah, I captured it correctly. We we finished and received all the health trust numbers after the posting was already done. And we we have to legally post seven days in advance before this public hearing. And we we didn't have these numbers back then when we posted, so um it we just finished it, I think, two days ago.
Can we do that? Uh David and Molly, uh in January before our other hearing, have two hearings back to you? That's it. All right, there we go. All right. Yeah, that wouldn't take very long anyway, I'm sure. So, okay, thank you, Travis. Any question, any questions for Travis or Molly on financial? Yes, Bob?
I was just going to mention that I went by the sign today. So indeed, the land is for sale. The sign is posted on one oh eight. You can see it when you go out one oh eight.
You are you interested, Bob?
No, we've got to stretch the land and buildings wherever.
I guess you do. Okay, thanks. All right then. Thank you so much. Um I don't believe we have any older new business, though I will uh remind the board that since we did finalize at least the recommended bottom line figure for the budget, we do not have to meet on December twenty-second, which was a tentative uh meeting. So you can take that off your calendar. I know you're all upset about that, but I just wanted to remind you, we will not be meeting on the twenty-second of December. Um what I'd like to do right now, we have a few items in the public input um that I will read. Uh Kim Lee, I think we read this earlier. Thank you to the anonymous donor for our local families. Um from Amy Faria, as a parent of two remote students who experienced significant issues with CMS scheduling with the switch to in-person learning, please consider allowing adequate time in the future to make these transitions. The fewer transitions, the better, of course. CMS has done an incredible job with remote learning this fall. Please do not take the scheduling issues as issues with remote learning. Teachers, administration, and all involved deserve to be commended for all of the effort, time, energy, and caring put into the school year. Thank you. From uh Maryam Levy, I believe, is is if that's pronounced correctly. Of course, this is the right time. Um I believe they're referring to the DEIJ position. There is never going to be a time where it is not going to be an expense. And we just heard that there is a surplus. From Patty Suret, Travis, please support the DEIJ J position and question it due to suffering, doesn't respect the actual role this represents. Please do not push this aside during times of chaos. It's the exact time to insert this very overdue position. Um from Maryam Levy, that is like saying go slow. Everyone agrees that this is something that is long overdue. This is not an extravagance, it is a necessity. From Elsa Silva, thank you for allowing sufficient time for comments. Please look at other middle schools our size in Massachusetts. They are successfully accomplishing hybrids since September. Multiple teachers who are friends in Massachusetts were shocked my child had not been in school since March. Please look at the Higgins Middle School, similar if not larger population and making it work. The children need to be in school and teachers are essential personnel. That is why they are administering vaccines to them before others. Uh from Liz Faria, I don't think you realize what damage you are doing to CMS and E H S kids by not going in person. Parents whose kids used to get As and Bs are often failing now. Many of these parents are just praying that their kids graduate um sorry, graduate high school. Um there's some expletives here that I'm going to delete. If you can't go back in person, refund money and let parents get tutors or let kids repeat the year. From Heidi C., there has never been a more crucial time for the DEIJ position. Pandemic has laid bare and exacerbated significant inequities in this community. S A U sixteen has at times struggled with profound issues of racism and racial inequities in our school. Principals are doing their part to try to address these, but they need help. There is more diversity here than folks often realize. We will have many more students facing poverty and challenges. A DEIJ person with appropriate training will be essential to navigate that. Our students and families are worth worthy of this investment. From Patty Suret, thank you, Paul and Bob. Sherry Gusta, we need to prepare our students to be engaged citizens with knowledge and skills to fight for justice and against racism and discrimination. We need to be sure our educational programs aligns with DEIJ values. This position is well overdue. Please fund it. From Michelle C., this is a crucial role because diversity includes the LGBTQ community and people with disabilities. Patty Suret, thank you, Kathy. Um Dawn Bullins, I agree that this is a very important position. There is little diversity here and our schools need this. We couldn't be less diverse, but diverse families live in our district. They shouldn't be marginalized and our children need to be able to navigate the real world beyond Exeter. Um from Dawn Bullin, celebrate the differences exactly. Uh from Taylor Florence, I have three children in the S A U's. Um Sonya, all of your team members are heroes. I have no idea how teachers have been so up to the task. I haven't ever double doubted, pardon me, our S A U, but I never imagined we could rise to this occasion. I have peers with kiddos remote and in person. The response has been nothing but positive. From Michelle C., thank you, Dr. Ryan. Equity is not the same as equal. From Jay, I fully support hiring the position. This is critical to strength to strengthen our community, families like mine who include B I P O C members deserve a more equitable and just school system from what we have now. Thank you for believing we can be this kind of community. Um Liz Faria is asking, which board member is not present? We are all present tonight. Um Patty Suret, Molly, you rock. From Sharon Wilson, she said, good evening. Um from Sean Rosen in Exeter, I agree that this diversity position would be incredibly valuable for all of our students. But until we can return to normalcy, not knowing what future financial burdens may come our way due to COVID, delaying this a year at least makes financial sense. There is way too much uncertainty at this time and for the foreseeable future to commit to new positions. Let's get our kids back to school full-time in person as soon as safely possible. That should be our highest priority. Thank you for the opportunity to have our voices heard. Um Patty Suret, considering comments are still open, I have observed this entire meeting. Um I have also watched Melissa online rallying, her supporters all legit. However, all are trying to signify some underlying conspiracy that the various boards are trying to provide fake news. This is not true. Taylor Florence, thank you, Molly, for all of your diligence and you are quick. Um Patty Suret, we have some uh we have some comments here with regard to individual board members that I I don't think would be appropriate to read.
Helen, it's fine if you read it. It's public comment. And you know what? I haven't been on social media. I haven't posted all during this meeting. You're you're welcome to read it. And maybe it's better if the if people know how other board members are talking about me. So that's fine, because it's not fact.
You want me to read it?
It's fine, Helen. It's fine. It's not true.
I think Melissa should do her business in public and stop trying to go to social media to rally people to undermine our concerted efforts to get all of our students back in person, unless Melissa does not actually believe in following CDC guidelines. Um Kim Lee, I have four kids with I E Ps. It has been a hard year for all. But I am going to say this, we as parents set the tone for our kids. Please don't don't let how you as a parent feel about the pandemic represent the feelings of your kids. David Slifka, thank you for sticking up for our children. Um Liz Faria, Melissa represents her constituents. And Patty Suret said, I can share it. And that is the end of our comments, so I'm going to close the chat box at this point in time. Thank you, David, if you would close it. I'm sorry, Dr. Ryan. Thank you.
All right, I did close it after that final.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right then, we do need, we have to, it's this will not take us very long, believe me. We only have a couple of items for non-public. But we do have to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one uh A colon three under C D and possibly I. So I will entertain a motion to move into non-public.
A move.
Thank you, Maggie. A second?
Uh second.
Kathy, thank you. Polling the board, aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
Thank you. We are in non-public at nine forty-one.
We are now back in public session.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to accept the M O A um as negotiated on working conditions. I believe, Bob, you had made that motion. Okay, and second? Second on that, Paul, thank you. All right, um I will poll the board again. Uh Melissa?
No.
Thank you. I'm a yes. Uh Kathy?
Yes.
Uh Paul?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Maggie?
Yeah, aye.
And Dave?
No.
Thank you. So it's a seven to two vote to accept the M O A is, I will let um Janet Pryor know about this uh tomorrow morning, and then I'll get back to you as soon as we hear about the teacher's ratification on it. And we need a motion now with regard to the sale of land that's owned by the district to authorize Dr. Ryan uh and or Molly to uh accept offers that are acceptable to this board uh with regard to that property. So do I have a motion to that effect?
A move.
A move.
Maggie, thank you. Travis, you want to second that?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, I'll poll the board again. Melissa?
Um, no.
No? Okay, uh, I'm in a yes on that. Uh, Kathy?
Yes.
Paul?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kim? I'm sorry, was that yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Maggie?
Yes.
And Dave?
Yes.
Thank you. So the vote is eight to one with regard to the sale of land. Alright, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I want to wish all of you a very happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be safe, be healthy. I look forward to seeing all of you again on January fifth through our hearing. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved and thank you Helen. Thank you Helen.
Thank you Helen.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you. Second on that Travis, I assume we're all in a, a agreement.
You better be.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
You Monday night.
Monday night, we're not done yet.
Oh, Monday night, I forgot, of course. How can I, okay, thanks guys. Yeah, but you're in charge Travis, so there you go.
Thanks Helen, I appreciate that.
It'll be an easy, easy night, easy night.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Bye.